Good evening and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, January 8th, 2024. Let the record reflect that the meeting is starting at 6:30. I would like to make recognition that all members of council are present this evening. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Next on the agenda, item four under General, we do have a very special recognition tonight. First off, the city would like to recognize Leslie Rounds for her 18 years of service with the Dyer Library and the Saco Museum. In the last five years, I have been honored to have been assigned as the Council Liaison. Working with Leslie and seeing her love, passion, and dedication to a place that she enjoyed by so many in our city is truly something that I will hold dear to me. She is someone who would never ask anyone to do something she would not do herself. The countless hours she had spent doing her own maintenance of the building and the grounds, from mowing, tearing out shelves, and yes, even climbing out the windows to check on the roof. Nothing was out of her realm of possibility. In a world of changing technology where books and research are just a tap away, Leslie has managed to install the wonder, imagination, and the feel of holding a book in your hand into a new generation of library lovers. She has secured a solid financial future with her annual fund campaigns and many fundraising events that are so looked forward to by many residents and visitors such as the Book Fair and the Festival of Trees. The City of Saco wishes to send our thanks and gratitude to Leslie Rounds for her incredible dedication of 18 years as the Executive Director of the Saco Museum and the Dyer Library, and also for many generations to come. With that, we also have another special recognition for Leslie, and this is going to be presented by Senator Donna Bailey and Representative Lynn Copeland with a legislative sentiment. Leslie, would you like to step up?
Okay. Whoa. Leslie, I just wanted to recognize you for all the wonderful things that you've done. The eyes that you've opened for the children and the exposure to a comfortable place to learn and read. And from my own experience, I had foster kids who've come through the library and done the Legos programs and read all kinds of books, and you just really gave that all of yourself into those works. And I know it's paid off so many times more than you will know with the kids who have memories from there, from the little cottage out in the back to, you know, coming after school and rushing in to meet up with everybody. And it's just incredible. And what you've done with the museum also and the bricks on the sidewalk. I mean, it's just so much you've brought to our community, and I'm extremely grateful. Thank you.
And with that, so for those of you who don't know, haven't heard my little spiel, but a legislative sentiment is the highest honor that the Maine State Legislature can bestow upon a citizen of the state of Maine. So I am very proud and honored to present Leslie with this legislative sentiment, and I'm just going to read what it says. "State of Maine, be it known to all that we, the members of the Senate and House of Representatives, join in recognizing Leslie Rounds of Arundel, who is retiring as Executive Director of the Dyer Library and Saco Museum after 17 years of service. We extend our congratulations and best wishes, and be it ordered that this official expression of sentiment be sent forth with on behalf of the 131st Legislature and the people of the state of Maine. It's dated the 14th of December, 2023, signed by the President of the Senate, Troy Jackson, and the Speaker of the House, Rachel Talbot-Ross, as well as the Secretary of the Senate and the Clerk of the House." So Leslie, on behalf of the state and the city, thank you for your many years of dedication and good luck in retirement, and I hope you have just a quiet, wonderful life. Although in talking with your husband, it sounds like you both have had a lifetime of public service, so certainly if you're interested in any boards or commissions up in the state, send me your name, all right, and we'll get you appointed. But anyways, on behalf of Representative Copeland and I, thank you very much. Thank you.[884.12][884.12](Applause).
Okay, we're going to pick this one up. Okay. Any other questions? So you know me, I've got something to say. First of all, thank you, councilors, Madam Mayor, City Administrator Bohenko, Senator Bailey, and Representative Copeland for recognizing my service to the citizens of Saco. Back in the early spring of 2006, one of my first official duties was to present the Dyer Library Association budget proposal to City Council. To say that I was anxious barely begins to cover it. I had been forewarned that City Council and the DLA weren't always playing on the same team, and in the early years of my time at the library, that proved to be too true. The following autumn, a prominent trustee even resigned because he was so fearful for the future of the Dyer Library, believing the organization was unsustainable without more connection from the city. But what he didn't anticipate was that over the years, the makeup and the vision of City Council would change and change again, and that perhaps new councilors would begin to hear that the staff and trustees of the DLA were thrifty and careful and driven, and that I had a reputation for pinching every penny two or three times. Whatever the cause, council and the DLA are now very much on the same team, and the DLA is working hard to provide great, highly valuable services to the citizens of Saco, including a gentle reminder that we now have the busiest children's room in the state and not by a small margin. And the council has been rewarding those efforts with reliable, enthusiastic support. After the worst year of my life, when it often felt like there was a little I could believe in beyond the close bonds of my husband and children, and that the sun would somehow continue to rise every day, I also believe this. Although it's so hard to leave my beloved staff, this wonderful organization, and these fabulous buildings that are my second home, I believe first that I leave it better than I found it, and that's because of that collaboration between staff and trustees and City Council. And second, I trust that the staff and trustees and you, the representatives of the people I have served, will continue to take loving, gentle care of this grand, thriving institution. So thank you so much for these past 17 years. It has been a huge pleasure to shepherd your library and museum for these years of my life. Thank you.[1077.78][1077.78](Applause). Thank you, everyone. We certainly do have big shoes to fill in finding a replacement. Leslie, you will be missed, but we'll always be welcome back. Okay, next on the agenda, item five, committee correspondence. Do we have any committee correspondence to council? Okay, not seeing any. Move us on to item number six, and that is public comment. We do have five members of the public that have written down to speak tonight. If there is any member that has written down to speak in favor or support of a candidate in the future agenda item, you can either speak now, or we will have a public hearing at the end of the candidate's presentations. So first up, we do have Rob Biggs. Please state your name, address for the record, and please keep your comments to three minutes.
You all pretty much know me, but I'm Rob Biggs, 334 Lincoln, and I'm here to publicly and enthusiastically thank Parks and Rec and Ryan and his team who came down and worked on picking up encampment trash that was in what we'll call Diamond Park West, which is Diamond Park and go over the railroad tracks and along the river. They pulled out 79 large 50-gallon bags of trash that was there, and there's more additional in that same property. Many of you in the public may not know that it's owned by the city, it's a public park, and it's going to be improved with regards to trails and more access this coming summer. And so there'll be hopefully lots of use by folks to fish and recreate and walk and so on and so forth in the park. But again, I wanted to thank Ryan and his team. They came out, I couldn't believe what they pulled out of there and how fast they did it, so again, very much appreciated.
Okay, next on the list, we do have Steve Nash.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Steve Nash. I live at 47 Plymouth Drive. I'm here today to enthusiastically support the nomination of Steve Bukavales to fill the vacant Ward Six City Council position. I've lived in Saco for 25 years, during which time I've gotten to know Steve, and I've known him quite well. We are both members of Saint Demetrius Greek Orthodox Parish, and both of us serve on the Church Council. Steve is a devoted father and a grandparent who served this community well, both as a citizen and a dedicated firefighter. He understands the challenges this community faces and how municipal government governance works. I've always been impressed by his work ethic, his knowledge of the issues, and his common sense approach to finding workable solutions. As a Marine, I served with many outstanding leaders during my 22 years of active service. Steve has all those requisite qualities. Give him a chance to show you he truly cares about the people of Saco. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, next we have John Carey.
Madam Mayor, Honorable members of the council, my name is John Carey. I live at 55A Ross Road here in Saco, lifelong resident, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Steve Bukavales as well. I highly recommend him to the mayor and council to fulfill that seat. Secondly, I've known his family for many, many years. I grew up on Common Street in Saco and the old Bukavales store down the street, so I knew his grandfather, his uncles, aunts, and many others as well. He's been a longtime public servant in the city of Saco, and I think will not only represent his ward well, but all of the city as well. So I give him my most hearty support. I also want to just say a comment here for Leslie. I was very moved, very moved by your comments. My mother was a librarian for 40 years here in Saco, and she loved her job just as much as you did. So that's a wonderful sentiment. You're a wonderful person, and congratulations to you as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, that would, next on the list is Steve Hewitt. And that brings up Chelsea Hill.
Good evening, Chelsea Hill, 108 Bradley Street. I'm here tonight to share some information that I learned over the last week. I was reviewing the public mapping tool through Maine Department of Transportation, and I was looking at crash data along Bradley Street just as a sample, and I noticed a column that I hadn't seen before called Crash Cost. And I've come before you before, and I've talked about, you know, it's really hard to assign value to how much it costs when someone gets hit by a car and to quantify the impact that that has in the community. So Crash Cost column is probably a good place to look at. I noticed like a few patterns, but I didn't really understand how the values were assigned, so I reached out to the Maine Department of Transportation, and they shared that it's based on the Federal Highway Administration's publication, I think it's called the Crash Highway, they use the word highway, it's not really highways, it's any public right-of-way, but the Crash Cost Analysis Guide or something like that, and I can email it to you. And they said, yep, so depending on the severity of the injury of the crash, you know, there's a value assigned, and this value is set forth in this publication, and Maine DOT follows this publication. And then they said, but you asked the question, and our numbers are out of date. So the cost is not accurate, it's old. It's 260% lower than what it actually is. So I figured I would come, and this is just like stuff that I learned yesterday and today. I wanted to share that with you, because if you're making a decision on where you should spend money in the city, and, you know, let's say all of Bradley Street from the interstate overpass down to Shaw's Street or the Shaw's intersection, there's been 72 crashes there since 2018, which is when the new publication came out. And that publication says that in Maine, it's 89 point, or it's .89 da-da-da-da percent of the national average, so you apply that control to the number. But with the old numbers, those 72 crashes are $5.464 million of impact, and that's economic and also quality of life. So they're measuring, you know, the first responders that are going out and, you know, all the equipment that they need to do their job, and then all, you know, how much it costs to repair damage to the street, damage to cars, da-da-da, and then they're also measuring the quality of life impact that it has on individuals that are, you know, hit or killed in a crash. And then let's say you're saying, oh, we need to slow traffic on Bradley Street down, but it costs $8 million. That's a lot of money, and the crashes only add up to 5.4. We're not going to be able to make that justification. But with the adjusted numbers, the cost of those 72 crashes is actually $14.25 million. So our community has absorbed since 2018 $14.25 million worth of negative impact. That's on people's lives and on their property. So I felt like it was important to share that information, and I would urge you that if you're getting a cost-benefit analysis on a safety improvement on a street in Saco, that you're asking for the pricing data that's backing up those safety, it's a safety-benefit analysis. Thank you.
Thank you. If there is any other member wishing to speak, please step to the podium. Okay, not seeing any other members asking for recognition tonight. That will move us down to item seven, which is the approval of the minutes for December 18th, 2023. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Any discussion? Okay, not seeing any. Roll call, vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes passes 6-0. Okay, that now takes us to item eight, consent items. There are several items on this agenda tonight, the first being confirm the mayor's appointment to the Park and Rec Advisory Board of Angela Presby, confirm the mayor's reappointment to the Park and Rec Advisory Board of Andrew Bracy and Chris Yanni, confirm the mayor's reappointments to the Shoreline Commission, Rick Millard, confirm the mayor's appointment of a city historian, Peter Scontress, confirm the mayor's appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission, Elizabeth Beth Johnston, confirm the mayor's appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission, Chris Delano, confirm the mayor's appointment to the Planning Board, Jeff Broschu, and confirm the mayor's reappointment to the Bitterford-Saco Old Orchard Beach Transit, Jean Saunders. Is there a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Could we pull item E?
Okay, there was a motion by Counselor Hatch. Yep, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion or... Counselor Johnston, do you want to move item E?
Please.
Confirm the mayor's appointment of... Confirm the mayor's appointment of the Historic Preservation Commission of Beth Johnston?
Yes, please.
Okay, that will now move down to, under Action Items, as Item A. Is there a, Counselor Hatch, are you okay with your motion?
I am, yes.
Okay, Counselor Johnston, okay with your second?
Yes.
Great. Any other discussion or items wishing to be discussed? Okay, not seeing any. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to approve the consent items passes 6-0. Okay, that now takes us to Action Items. Consent Item E has now moved to Consent Item A. Confirm the mayor's appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission of Elizabeth Beth Johnston. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Gunn, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Archer? Second by Counselor Archer. Any discussion? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I only pulled it, obviously, the confirmation is for my mother last I checked my birth certificate, so I just wanted the opportunity abstain from that vote, so, thank you.
Do you wish to abstain, or do you counsel approval if you were to vote?
I will be abstaining.
Okay. Any other discussion? Counselor Gunn?
Would you like me to read the item commentary and for the record?
Yes, please.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Okay. The Historic Preservation Commission is comprised of five regular members and up to five associate members. Members serve terms as outlined in subsection 230-1902 of the city's administrative code. Mayor McFail has recommended the appointment of Elizabeth Beth Johnston to the Historic Preservation Commission as an associate member with a term expiration of June 30th, 2026. Be it ordered that the city council confirm the mayor's appointment of Elizabeth Beth Johnston to the Historic Preservation Commission as an associate member with a term expiring on June 30th, 2026, I move to approve the order.
Thank you. Motion has been made by Counselor Gunn. Counselor Archer with your second? Thank you. Roll call vote. Counselor Roger?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Abstain.
Motion passes 5-0 with one abstention. Okay, now that moves us on to the appointment of the Ward Six Council seat. We have two applicants. The process tonight is each applicant will be presented with seven minutes to speak to council, then we will do a Q and A with the counselors, council discussion, and then a public hearing. We are going to call the candidates up by the order their applications were received, and that would be, Steve Bukavales would be the first speaker. Please approach the podium and address council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and distinguished city council. Thank you for the citizens that have come out this evening in support of myself and the candidate, Chris Hewitt. Folks, 2024, it's a new year, a new time to focus our energy on what is in front of us and try to avoid looking back at anything that, negative that may have been approaching the city, because I feel strongly that working as a team, we can accomplish a lot of things. There are a lot of things to be done. I really think that we have a thriving aging community in this, in Saco, and it's going to continue to grow. And that is the same around the state of Maine. I work for the state, I see these numbers on a daily basis. We are an aging population. I just turned 62 myself, so I'm approaching that, that place. And I really want to make sure that we continue to do things for our aging population, but also for our young people. I want to keep them in this community, and we need to collectively look at ways on how we do this. How do we keep people here? How do we keep them in this community, working the professional jobs, the white collar jobs, as well as the blue collar jobs, which are important to our tax base? Like any other place, businesses are always looking to go elsewhere. I think we need to keep our businesses here. I also really have a great, great concern of the growing homeless population. I had the opportunity to speak to a member of the Tri-City Transit District the other day, who shared with me that a number of individuals are being given tickets, and they're coming to the Saco-Bitterford area. How do we deal with this? We have Mr. Biggs that just talked about homeless encampments. How do we protect these people as well as protect the folks that live here? There has to be a balance, because it's not going away, it's going to get worse. I want to share with you some of my experiences here, as you've read in my letter to the mayor and the council, which I submitted through our city clerk. I have 40 years with the city of Saco. I started in 1977 under a program that we once had, which was a juvenile program, which was under David Corbett, who was a patrol officer for the Saco Police Department. And he paralleled that with a police cadet program. And I had the opportunity to belong to that for a year. And we painted crosswalks, we painted parking spaces on Main Street when they were converting from the angle parking to parallel parking. But prior to that, my dream as a kid was always to be a firefighter. And when Deputy Chief Charles Hanson started the junior firefighter program, I heeded that opportunity, I jumped on board. I became the youngest EMT in the Saco Fire Department in 1978. I had the fortunate opportunity of the late Chief Kenneth Pendleton, who supported me in being able to achieve that. And I continued to progress through the department. At that time, and I talked about keeping people here to work and that stuff, the pay was very mediocre. I had goals that I wanted to set for myself. I did some college courses, some vocational courses, and I proceeded into private industry. In 1998, the opportunity presented myself to me to come to work in the Public Safety Communications Division and also become the city's Emergency Management Director. I heeded the opportunity and dove right into it and continued my service with the fire department. 1998 was a very interesting year, because I was drawn into a program called Project Impact. Worked with Larry Neto, Bob Bowman at York County EMA, submitted grant paperwork. We had a catastrophic issue every time the Saco River would flood, Sawyer Brook would flood on Spring Street. Every time we would get a storm at Camp Ellis, that age-old problem that still happens today would rear its head. We heeded the opportunity to submit grant paperwork to the federal government, and we were awarded the first Project Impact community in the United States of America, which I think is, is, you know, a great thing. And we had engagement of the public. Very important in all the decisions that are made, that we engage our public, that we should fill this auditorium like we see in other cities and get people here to come. I know we have that virtual thing where folks can watch, and, but does that give them the opportunity to have input? Not really. So I come again before you tonight, because I really, really, really love my city. I had the opportunity to run against the mayor in 2019, and I was humbled by the short run that I had and the fact that I lost by 48 votes, which is, I think, pretty good for a guy that only put his name out there a couple of months, a couple of months before that. But also, there's that old saying, timing is everything. Well, guess what? COVID-19 hit. I work for the Maine Center for Disease Control and Prevention. I am the senior planner and emergency operations chief, and we're, believe it or not, even though COVID's over, we're still at it, but we're at it with a whole bunch of other things. So timing wasn't perfect at that time. I say the stars aligned, and I applaud my representative, former representative for Ward Six, for everything that she did in our ward, and for being a face out there in the community with the businesses along this Main Street. I didn't start her timer, so I don't know how much time I have.
Yep, actually, just a little over, but that's okay.
Okay, but I want to thank you for giving me this opportunity to come before you, and I want to wish the other candidate good luck. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Oops, stay up, Steve. Yep.
Oh.
Yep, stay at the podium.
The Q and A.
Not done yet.
Okay.
At this time, each counselor will have an opportunity to ask a question of you, and we will start with Ward One. Counselor Archer?
Thank you.
I've had the opportunity, as a city employee, to collaborate with the council, the mayor, a couple of city administrators on a pretty regular basis during my tenure as an Emergency Management Director. And I've always, I believe in active listening. Active listening leads to active learning. Understanding what the issues are, studying the issues before coming to a predetermined decision are paramount in making good, sound decisions for the 21,000-plus citizens of this community. We all have our thought process, but at the end of the day, to agree to disagree is an important thing in democracy. We have to work together. And if I am, I don't want to use the word lucky enough to get this appointment. I've lived here for 61-plus years, and I think engagement in my community has been one of my best traits. And in other committees and commissions I belong to, the, I've been on the Board of Directors since 1993 of the York County Firefighters Association. I was appointed by Governor McKernan to be on the Maine Fire Safety Advisory Board. I was a past vice president of the Maine State Federation of Firefighters. All of those are boards that work with a lot, a lot of people. And I never lost when it came time to step aside Maine State Federation of Firefighters. It was by my choice in 2000, I served from 1992 to 2000, because I had this job with the city that I had to focus on, and there were a lot of things that were coming down the pike. And I was being, you know, compensated to do something, and it was very hard for me to walk away, but I still serve in an advisory capacity today. That should certainly speak to my character and my willingness and ability to work with every one of you here. And to bounce things off you, thoughts and ideas, if we're, if we're, if we're a one-way street, that's the way we're going to continue to go. It has to be two-way, and again, we can agree to disagree, but at the end of the day, the best decision is for all the citizens of Saco.
Thank you. Counselor Parks, do you have a question?
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
I'm still getting used to this thing.
Okay.
You brought up before that you ran for this post and you ultimately lost by 48 votes. I was wondering if you could explain to the council what you learned in running and losing that's going to make you a better counselor, should you get the position?
Well, I, again, I applaud my opponent, if you will, at that time, because she spent a lot of time going out there and meeting the candidates. Our families have a long history, her dad and my family, so I kind of know, Madam Mayor. I just want to say that it's important to get out there and meet people. That's a lesson I learned. You know, not to take it for granted just because your name has been in this community since 1900. I shouldn't take that for granted. The fact that my family was in business for 50 years, I shouldn't have taken that for granted. And I, I learned a lot from that. You know, I touched many lives in my other services to the city, but in that one, I really, you know, should have done more legwork. So I hope that answers your question.
Great, thank you so much. Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Bukavales, for being here and stepping up to apply for this. Thank you. Forgive me, I'm going to read this, because, you know, it's, light's a little low. "In taking on the responsibilities that come with being a city counselor, you may and more than likely will encounter criticism from the public, most commonly on social media. While some criticism may be valid and constructive, others might be below the belt, reflecting the increased vitriol we see these days directed towards elected officials at all levels of government. How would you deal with receiving such comments in the course of performing your duties as a city counselor?"
Constructive criticism is, you know, one of the things that we all have to learn to deal with in our daily jobs. Some remarks aren't so kind, and others are, are important. But again, everybody is important. They have a, you know, I, I've been kicked below the belt before, excuse the expression, but I've gotten back up, and I don't really like to get in a dogfight with anybody. It does nothing for my character, and it does, and in some cases, it ignites others. I do not want that. I want to, you know, feel out the concerns of people, find out where they're coming from. We, we can't satisfy all the people all the time, but some of the people some of the time, okay? And I think we really, you know, that is one of the things that I don't want to do. I want to be a productive part of the city. I want to take on the challenges that face the city, working collaboratively with everybody here, but I also want to make sure that I'm representing the constituents. But I also want to make sure that I'm representing the constituents well.
Great. Thank you. Councillor Berman.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Boukavales, it's nice to meet you. I don't think we've met before.
Nice to meet you as well. I've, I've seen you on TV.
Lovely. So, I guess I'm wondering what success would look like for you? If you're appointed to this position at the end of your first term, what would you need to have accomplished in order to consider it successful? Or maybe in other words, what are your biggest goals?
So, I don't have one particular agenda item because by looking at your agenda, you have a lot of agenda items. And in some way, somehow, they're important to the citizens of this city. One of my biggest goals I would like to see is, it happens to be in your ward because it's been a longtime passion of mine when I walked the shoreline of Campellus with Don Paulson, who was the head of Homeland Security, Senator Collins, and, and a number of other federal senators and representatives. I've always wanted to see that golden nugget dropped in the lap of the city so the work would start. And that's a big, big thing that I want to see accomplished. I, you know, if I had to set a priority in the city, that would be to get that job done because with every inch of shoreline that we use, lose, with every property that we lose, we lose money in our tax base. And it has to come from someplace else. Okay? So, we need to fix that problem. FEMA's approached us on a few occasions and said, "We want to buy it all." Well, you don't have enough money. And I'm not totally convinced at this point in time, I've seen agreements signed, I've seen earmarks made, that this is going to get done. And the only way this will get done is to continue to put the pressure on, to work collaboratively with the Army Corps of Engineers, to work collaboratively, collaboratively with our congressional delegation, that they get this money, to get the replenishment happening. So, we're not dumping, just dumping sand on the beach to have it wash down to Scarborough. We really need the solution because we can dump all the sand we want, we can plant all the dunes we want, but sand is going to go to, go to Scarborough until we get work done. And there, there's no guarantee. What they've, they're proposing is, is going to work. I've seen these things when I went to the National Hurricane Center and spent a couple of weeks down there a few years back. I've seen a lot of these projects around the country, and some of them have been spot on and they've worked perfectly, and others haven't. You know, so I want to make sure that we're getting the right thing and we're getting that job done. That's one of my, one of my goals. My other goal is to get through the next 10, 11 months. There's a lot to be accomplished, and it doesn't get accomplished in that amount of time. You have to vest yourself in this council. If I'm not successful tonight, I have, you know, I plan to put my name forward in, in Octo, well, August. I plan to put my name forward. When the opportunity comes out to take papers out, I will be there. I can assure you of that. And I will, you know, vest myself in, in being here to learn, whether I'm learning on that side of the table or I'm learning on this side of the table. You're welcome.
Thank you. Councillor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. Mr. Boukavales, welcome. Thank you for stepping up. Councillor Berman and I know exactly how you feel. We were in the same position as we had to come forth to appointments, to our seats. So, I appreciate the fact you stepped up and saying to Mrs. Hewitt. I have a personal concern and my attention to land use within the city. And it's a complex issue. We've got numerous competing priorities that are hard to find good answers to. We've got pressure for residential development with increased density. We've got infrastructure concerns, particularly with pedestrian safety and bicycle safety. We clearly have an affordable housing issue. We need to accelerate our commercial development. And then we have, of course, the issues related to the unfortunate circumstances with our unhoused. I'd like you to just pick one or two things, whether it's on that list or in your own list.
I'd love the opportunity to hit them all.
Yeah.
Because they're all certainly concerns of mine.
Pick one or two that you think you can bring forth a specific strategy. We've had a lot of rhetoric, but I'm interested in specific strategies, if you, if you don't mind.
So, one of, one of the things in my, my job as the senior planner and emergency operations chief at Maine CDC is I collaborate with a lot of agencies within the state, both governmental and non-governmental. And a lot of these things that we, you just mentioned, we deal with on a daily basis. And one of the things we collectively watch is, we watch the U.S. Census numbers and growth within communities. And I look at the growth that we've seen in this community over the last four years, and it's pretty substantial. And absorbing that is, is very tough on a lot of levels. I want to try to avoid getting into too much of the development that's over near the Greek Orthodox Church. I'm a parishioner there. I'm concerned with it. If I stood here and told you I wasn't, I'd be telling you a lie. But I'm not here to discuss that tonight because that's a whole fight in itself. I am very, very concerned, though, about the traffic safety that is happening, not only on Bradley Street, Lincoln Street, North Street, but all around the community. I, I'm concerned that we don't have a sustained police department. Staffing is at levels that were, they're at 1988 levels. When our federal levels, if they say per capita, you should have five offices per 1,000 people, we're never going to get there. What do we do to get our, you know, get people to come and work for our police department and stay here and not, you know, come in, go through the academy, and then we're bought, we're, we're getting a rebate from another community? We need a good traffic safety program. Our police department cannot handle that today because they are so overtaxed with handling everything else. So, you know, people are out there and joke, "We can drive as fast as we want through Saco and we're not going to get stopped for it." Tonight, when I was getting ready to cross Main Street, a business owner two doors down here, not what I'd call a paramount business for Main Street and one that's a, you know, thing, wouldn't stop for me and another person in the crosswalk, and they saw us crossing. They decided to spend their tires. We've had people hit on Main Street. We've had two people killed at Water and Main. It's not, it's not acceptable. We need to do better. We had the lady recently killed on the corner of Bradley and, and Scammon. That has been a notorious intersection for motor vehicle accidents from the time I started serving public safety. And it, it really hasn't gotten any better. You have a four-way stop there. Sit in the parking lot someday and watch it. Watch all the cars that go through. Traffic safety is a big, big issue for me.
Thank you. Councillor Johnston.
Again, thank you, you know, for coming forward and putting your name in the hat.
Thank you.
I guess one of the disadvantages of going last is oftentimes, everybody else asks all the good questions. And so, a lot of the prior questions overlapped with what I had in mind, but I will adjust on the fly. I view Ward Six very similarly to Ward Seven. And I mean that demographically. I'm not specifically talking about race because obviously, we're not that diverse of a state. I mean, age-wise, it's various. We have youngsters all the way up to, you know, the oldest people in Saco. Affluence or, or income levels vary. Housing situations vary. So, in that sense, I view the wards, again, almost like sister wards. I always have. I guess, again, since the goal here is to choose a Ward Six representative, and that has always been at, you know, the heart of, you know, how I've addressed all of these prior appointments. Do you think you have a good understanding or pulse on the people in your ward? And if not, how would you go about, you know, meeting those people and interacting with them?
I feel that I have a really good pulse on both the young people, the schoolchildren, because I have schools in my neighborhood, and I also have a very aging population in my neighborhood and the surrounding Ward Six. You know, it's interesting when I look at the, the issues of like housing and how do we make our housing affordable and, and be able to do that? And, and I hear it. I've, I've had people reach out to me via social media since I, I put this, people I don't know, people that have asked me to come and speak to them. And I didn't prematurely want to go start addressing issues until I had, you know, some pulse on, on what is going to happen here this evening. But I've had a number of them say, "What can you do to help me out here? What can you do to make my rent affordable? What can you do to keep me here?" Because, you know, a close friend of mine recently moved to Old Orchard Beach from School Street. And his rent went from $1,200 a month on School Street to $2,000 a month. And he said, "I can't do that," you know? And interesting enough, he said, "I really, really want to come back to Saco because I want my kid, his last kid, going to Thornton Academy where his daughter graduated from." And, you know, I said, "Mark, I really, really wish I could answer that question for you. What can we do to help you out with that?" So, I'm pretty familiar with the demographics around me. I, you know, I see the kids walking to school. I see the buses going by every day. I'm still familiar with some of the, the teachers that are, you know, people that are children of people I went to school with. And, you know, they say we're, our classrooms are bulging. We need new school. That is something that is going to impact our demographic down the road. We, how do we do that? How do we make it affordable without that overload to the, to the taxpayer? Because I'm hearing the same thing. I can't afford these taxes. I know what I pay on the corner of School and High Street. It's, you know, I'm glad, I thank God I have a good job. Thank God that I have a wife that makes good money, and I'm fortunate that I have a rental in my building. And I'm able to, it allows me to do things that I want to do, to make the improvements to my infrastructure. It, it allows me to do some fun things, too, that, you know, a lot of people don't have that. And I really, I see a lot of people in crisis from this. And it's not just here in our beloved city of Saco, it's all around us. But our focus needs to be here. What do we do? We have to make good, sound decisions and put ourselves up here and not put ourselves down here like some other communities have done and are doing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay. That completes the surrounding questions.
Thank you.
May I take a seat? And next up, we will call Tricia Hewitt.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Jody McPhail, distinguished councillors Marshall Archer, Joshua Parks, Joseph Gunn, Michael Berman, Philip Hatch, Nathan Johnson, and esteemed community members. Saco, sorry, give me some mic. Saco stands as an extraordinary and vibrant community. As a testament to the dedication of our town, employees, first responders, community leaders, and volunteers, I extend my gratitude to each and every one of you for contributing to the unique charm that makes Saco an exceptional place to live. Our town has earned accolades for most playful city in America, and initiatives like Age-Friendly Saco exemplify our commitment to enhancing the lives of our citizens. I stand before you, Tricia Hewitt, a candidate seeking to fill the vacant Ward Six council seat. My upbringing instilled in me the belief that democracy is an active endeavor, requiring involvement and service to our communities. I am a graduate of Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute in New York. My husband and I have raised our three sons, Andrew, Danny, and Cameron, for 22 years in our historic home on Main Street. As an attac at both Fairfield and C.K. Byrne School, I have an insight into the needs of our community, especially our younger Saco Schools and Thornton Academy are institutions that warrant our unwavering support to continue providing excellent education. My professional background as an associate research scientist and a supervisor for Sanofi and Merck Pharmaceuticals demonstrates my research skills. As a councillor, I'm committed to researching and effectively communicating the needs and desires of our constituents. I recognize the value of tapping into unique insights of those directly involved in the areas affected by our decisions. Misinformation can cloud judgment, and I am dedicated to ensuring that our decisions are based on accurate and reliable data. While Saco boasts of natural beauty, intelligent, kind citizens, we are not without our challenges. As a real estate agent, I am acutely aware of the rise in cost of homes, rendering homeownership for first-time homeowners in Saco almost impossible. In fact, today I saw a study, Saco rated third in the state of Maine for most expensive place to live when you compare the income to the cost of housing. There are questions about affordable workforce housing, the impact of development on infrastructure, the burden of increased taxes on our citizen. All of these demand thoughtful consideration. In tackling these challenges, I propose an approach centered on building relationships grounded in trust. Saco's success with community policing serves as a shining example of this, how this can work and serve a community. I believe we can foster further understanding by building bridges between our town leaders, citizens, and businesses. Collaboration, communication, and active listening to our councillors, community members, and business owners, and the experts are essential to making informed decisions. If granted the opportunity to serve as a town councillor, my commitment is to cast votes aligned with the constituents' intent and the greater good of our community, setting aside my personal opinions. In the words of Margaret Chase Smith, "Public service must be more than doing a job efficiently and honestly. It must be a complete dedication to the people." I pledge to be your representative, not your politician. If your vision for a Saco councillor aligns with my qualifications, I respectfully ask you to vote this evening. Together, let's continue making Saco the exceptional community we all cherish. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tricia. Okay, next we will move to the round of questions, and we will start with councillor Archer.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Tricia, again, to you as well, thank you for stepping up and putting your hand to ring. Civic engagement is important to me, and sometimes we just don't see as much participation as I'd like, so anytime I do see it, I applaud it. I'm going to do the same exact question in the interest of fairness, but I did want to put-
to put, as when I was thinking about both of your candidates, I've been making notes here, you both got about the same amount of email requests to me.
Okay.
Steve would, I'd get one, support from Steve, and then moments later, one would come in from you. And it seemed to be that way for, maybe not the whole week, but it feels like it. So with that said, I'll go to the question. Effective collaboration among city counselors and the mayor is crucial for successful governance. How do you envision fostering positive relationships and open communication with your fellow counselor members and the mayor to ensure productive decision-making and a cohesive approach to addressing the city's challenges? Can you provide examples of how you've successfully collaborated with others in the past?
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, my goal would be to meet with the counselors and be available to discuss with them at any time in a way which the city charter would enforce and make it as public as possible so that there's, that the public has the opportunity to know what we're talking about. My goal in anything I ever do is to research, 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 coming from an engineering school, that's what I was taught. And I think just listening to people, active listening, working in the schools, especially with a diverse population, and my specialty was in special ed, you learn to listen carefully to not just what people are saying, but to body language, to understanding where people are coming from and what the need they're trying to meet is. So I think that would be the way I would handle it, but I'd always be open to listening to people. And in a way that I've been able to work together with people. My mom was raised three boys while my husband's working in Boston, so I can get a lot done and have to manage different needs. In a professional setting, I was part of Fairfield School, and I have to tell you, your teachers were amazing. When COVID hit, we were given, I mean, maybe a day to prepare all the information, everything that had to go home for the students. And you had the most dedicated staffs that did not for a moment complain. I mean, I remember at the end seeing a teacher, that was a tiny, small teacher, pulling this cart of what had to be 200 pounds of papers and pencils. And being a part of a team like that has been a wonderful example of how to work together. I've been in situations where I worked with the oil chemical atomic workers, the Teamsters, were part of my staff, and trying to collaborate with them when we were doing the AIDS study meant that things sometimes had to be shipped. And because people's immunity was compromised by the drugs, if they didn't make the shipment, people could die. So I learned very quickly that you have to negotiate with people, you have to be willing to compromise, but in the end, you have to get the job done.
Great, thank you. Counselor Parks.
Unfortunately, I can't do the same question I did for us.
That's okay.
Now, do you view the role of a city counselor as being that of a trustee or a delegate? Now, let me explain the difference, because I understand not all of us took Herb Adams' state and local government course. Now, a delegate represents the, they stay close to the public opinion of their ward in this case, and they make decisions accordingly on their ward's will, so to speak. Now, a trustee, on the other hand, can have a little bit more leeway to use their own best judgment, kind of go with a gut feeling. So do you see it as a trustee or a delegate?
I would say it would be more of a delegate to represent the people, but if there was ever a time where the popular opinion posed a safety threat or something that didn't seem reasonable, I would also confer with the other counselors and see if they felt differently why, and try and convey that back to my populace and try and come to a middle ground.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mrs. Hewitt, for being here, and thank you for stepping up. In taking on the responsibilities that come with being a city counselor, you may and more than likely will encounter criticism from the public, most commonly on social media. While some criticism may be valid and constructive, others might be below the belt, reflecting the increased vitriol we see these days directed towards elected officials at all levels of government. How would you deal with receiving such comments in the course of performing your duties as a city counselor?
As a city counselor, if I receive constructive criticism, I would definitely take it to heart and reflect on it and try and respond appropriately. If it was just angry speaking out, I would look to, what is the person upset about and why do they feel this way? Do they feel disenfranchised? Do they feel I didn't listen to them or acknowledge their needs? I would consider things like that. But I also, I would never respond to a negative comment on social media in a negative way and reflect poorly on the city.
Thank you very much. Counselor Berman.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Hewitt, it's a pleasure to meet you.
Hi.
Thank you for being here. The same question I want to ask to you, if you're appointed tonight, at the end of your term, what would you need to have accomplished in order to consider it successful? Or maybe another way of asking that is, what are some of your top priorities you want to get done as a counselor?
To be successful, I would hope we would have moved forward on the new school in the best way that the people of Saco would like, and hopefully in a way that it's not going to increase the tax burden, because I think a lot of people are kind of shocked by their tax bills right now. But as a town counselor, sometimes you have to look at the numbers, so those would be things I would be hoping to help with. But the biggest thing would be, did I convey the wishes of my ward and the best interest of my ward and collaborate with the other counselors? That would be the goal. Obviously, I would like to see Thornton Academy continue to thrive and flourish. They do some amazing things there that help not only Saco, but I've seen their students go out and do amazing things in the world. So continuing to support education would definitely be a passion of mine, but again, any decisions would be based on what I think the voters would like to see.
Thank you. Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. Ms. Hewitt, welcome.
Hi.
Thank you for stepping up as well.
Thank you.
I'm going to go along the same lines as my previous question, which has to do with land use and conflicting priorities. I'm going to rattle off the same things that are rattling in my head that I gave to Mr. Bukavales, and I'd ask you to maybe pick one or two and give me some specific strategies that you think might be worth pursuing to resolve those issues. They are complex. They're intertwined, and the complexities of each, there's a reaction here, there's a reaction there, and we have to figure out how to maneuver through those. So the five that I kind of spoke about were the pressure for increased residential development density, pressures on infrastructure, which particularly pedestrian safety and bicycle safety. We have affordable housing in the mix, which is an issue. The need for additional commercial development and trying to come up with solutions to help our unhoused. So you can pick from those or any others that may be in your head, but I'm interested in some land use concerns of yours.
Certainly. As a real estate agent, I frequently hear different sides of developers who want to develop, people that don't want it in their backyard. So I have heard different versions, and I work with homeowners all the time that are looking to buy and are shocked by the cost. So I do see the need for us to come up with some sort of housing. Things I've seen in other communities that have been successful, sometimes city councils will offer a tax incentive to people that are offering a certain percentage, not the entire thing. I've seen a certain, I can think of it, my great-grandfather was named after the Ahern Apartments in a town in New York, and unfortunately, it failed because it was, there were some issues of poverty that caused some failures. What I've seen recently, they've done in Boston and some other places, is a mixed use. You, the town would designate a certain percentage of the housing that would be required to be affordable housing. Now, affordable housing, you can, you know, there's different definitions of what that is depending on what the rents are in the area. So, you know, offering some tax incentives, having a percentage so that people can get the opportunity to live in the area and attend the schools they would like to attend, I think those are both things to consider. Do you want me to keep going? Okay.
That's a good answer, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
All righty, thank you, and Counselor Johnson.
Welcome.
Hi.
Welcome.
I'll do the same and stick to that same question I gave to Mr. Bukavales, which, again, goes back to diversity of the ward and whether or not you think you have a good understanding of that presently, and if not, how you'd go about interacting with members of your ward.
Well, first, I'd like to offer, if given the opportunity, that I live across from the Dire Library. My husband's involved with the library, that, you know, once or twice a week, I would post times on social media and to my constituents, that I would be there and ready to listen and answer any questions people have, to be somewhere that's public, there's no charge, there's no cost to anybody, and be accessible to my constituents. I would be more than willing to talk to anyone on the phone, social media, in person, to learn more. I was involved a few years back when there was going to be a contract zone, and some neighbors, the Acapella Salon was going to build, some neighbors were upset. I had the opportunity to work with Peter Danton when they were trying to solve that debate. So I got to meet a bunch of the neighbors in those wards, but I do feel I could get to know them better and learn more about what their wishes and desires are.
Thank you. Thank you, Tricia.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next aspect of this process is item number three, and that is council discussion. Is there any discussion amongst the counselors? Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. I really want to thank both candidates for throwing their hat into the ring. As someone who's appointed this council, following a process like this, I understand the terribleness of being on that side of the podium during this process. It is way better on this side than on that side while we go through this. It's really just an awful process for you, and I really appreciate you offering to serve the public in this way and stepping up and subjecting yourself to this level of scrutiny. I also want to acknowledge that both candidates received large amounts of public support. My inbox was flooded this week in a way that it hasn't been in a long time. I think Counselor Archer referred to that also, and both candidates really have demonstrated, members of the ward and the city who are willing to speak on their behalf and the strength of their candidacy. And we just acknowledge, we've seen really two really strong candidates who want to serve the public, and I think it's going to be a difficult decision for us. So it's really, thank you both for stepping up and offering us your vision and offering to serve the city.
Don't forget, you had the luxury of Zoom. You were sitting on your couch.
And I was in Florida.
And you were in Florida, I guess. Any other councilors wishing to discuss? Okay, not seeing anybody. That will move us now on to the public hearing. And that is assigned to Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. I move to open the public hearing for the filling of Ward Six council seat.
Second.
Motion has been made by Counselor Hatch, second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion? We'll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to open a public hearing passes six zero. Okay, if there is any member of the public wishing to speak, please step to the podium. Please state your name and address, and you will have three minutes.
I won't take three minutes. My name is Jean Saunders. I'm at 3 Plymouth Drive. I'm here tonight to enthusiastically endorse Trish Hewitt's candidacy as Ward Six City Council Representative. I have known Tricia and her family for over 20 years as residents of Saco. Tricia not only has been a long-term resident of Saco, but was also a power professional in the school system for over nine years, prior to her being employed by Merck Pharmaceuticals, utilizing her BA in management from Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute. As her youngest child, sitting here tonight, is now a freshman at TA, she has taken on the new challenge of entering the real estate industry. Trish can best be described as not only a hard worker, but very analytical in her approach to any new concepts, and will take the time necessary to learn about a subject before making a decision. I have witnessed how Tricia can bring together disparate groups of people to bring about a common solution. She is a collaborator who will look out for all of the residents' interests of Saco. Trish and her husband, Steve, have raised three fine, young adult men, ones that are already making quite a difference in our society. She espouses the values that I believe are essential to be in a decision-making role for the city of Saco. Please consider supporting Trish for the Ward Six City Counselor, as she can bring a new perspective based on her varying life experiences in the corporate world, the Saco school system, as well as a Realtor, especially understanding currently the issues in our housing market. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Any other member wishing to speak?
Good evening. I'm Steve Hewitt, 380 Main Street, Saco, Maine, obviously Tricia's husband. I guess the reason, the biggest reason I'm standing up here is to say, as a volunteer, she has taken on many different roles of what people didn't want to take, working with the Hockey Boosters, working with other TA groups where nobody else would stand up. Tricia jumped into the fray and got involved with some situations that really nobody else wanted to help out with, raising money for the Hockey Boosters, helping out with TAM's Parents Council, these kind of things where she worked with people that really didn't want to be worked with. But she brings a lot of energy, a lot of intelligence, and a lot of enthusiasm, and even though she doesn't have the political experience of this board, she brings a lot to it. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Steve. Any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Good evening. My name is Michelle Bukavales, and I live at 35 School Street. Thank you, Madam Mayor and counselors, for the opportunity to speak to you today. There has been a lot said about my husband, Stephen Bukavales, and I would like to provide you with a little bit of additional piece of information. You can hear a lot about his accolades and the things he does at work, or the things he does when he volunteers for the city, but to me, integrity are those things that you see when, or the things that you do when no one's there. And I wanted to provide you with a very small glimpse into the integrity of Stephen Bukavales. He is the type of person that will pick up the trash when he's walking around the block and put it in his own pocket. He is the person who will take a snow brush and try to save a turtle so that it doesn't get hit by a car. He is the type of person that makes sure that the sand on the sidewalk is moved so that the elderly folks that walk near our home don't slip and fall. He is the person who buys me 100 pounds of sand and salt so that I can put it around our neighborhood, so that way our community members don't fall. This is on the city's property, this isn't on my driveway. He is the person who will pull over when you're stopped and give you a boost in case your battery is dead. He will help a stranger up, he has helped many strangers up the stairs when they couldn't quite make it. He is the type of person who will make sure that you have the things that you need, and he will purchase food and bring it to the Saco pantry. He donates his money to the Saco pantry in a lot of our community, and you don't see that, and you don't hear that. And I think that it's important that you understand that the person that you're thinking of today is not just someone who may have this grandiose ability to perform almost every task that you put in front of him, but he's also the type of person that's going to lean forward and say, how can I help you? How can I do something to help this person? Not in a public way, but he's going to lean forward and say, I can help you with that. And I hope that that is something that you all know and consider, because he is a very quiet person at home when it comes to the grandiose things that he does. And I hope that all of you get to see that as an opportunity to be your peer. So thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Any other members? Okay, not seeing anyone. Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. I move to close the public hearing on filling of Ward Six council seat.
Motion has been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second to close the public hearing?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Any discussion? We'll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero to close the public hearing. Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. We had ordered that the City Council appoint Tricia Hewitt as the Ward Six Councilor with a term starting on January 22nd, 2024, and ending on December 2nd, 2024, as per City Charter Section 2.06(c)(2).
Motion has been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Gunn? Any discussion? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Goodness. I, you know, we've heard a lot, definitely have heard a lot, and I appreciate, you know, all the comments, whether they were here tonight or via emails, what have you. I would agree that, I think several of the counselors have stated that this is a difficult decision. I would say it's probably, personally, thinking about it, it's probably one of the more difficult for me personally, just because I think you have two outstanding candidates. As Counselor Archer alluded to earlier, and I myself am on the record several times now, because this will be my fourth appointment, I don't like this process. It's incredibly undemocratic, from my opinion. It becomes a popularity contest, which I don't want to be a part of. That's not my role. Ward Six should select their representative, not Ward Seven representative, or any other representative here. So, just had to get that out there, hoping that as we move forward, we will figure a better process out, because I've been here 10 years, and I've done four, which, that's significant in my book. As, as far as, you know, how we move forward, obviously we have a motion on the floor, but myself, I need to be consistent in the process I've used previously. And so, with, with two of my fellow counselors sitting here before me or with me, I use the process that I felt was in the best interest of their wards. So, in Counselor Berman's case, you know, I listened to residents of Ward Four's comments, and overwhelmingly, they supported Mike. I went with Counselor Berman. And another caveat there is that Counselor Berman ran twice. He took those nomination papers out, went door to door, got a sizable voted amount there. So I, I gave an extra checkmark in that regard. Again, with Counselor Hatch, overwhelming support for Counselor Hatch. So I went in that way. Over the last three weeks, I think it's been three weeks since we were here last, I've had a lot of interaction with Ward Six residents, those that I see on Main Street, that I know personally, that I either say, "Who do you want? Because I don't want to make this choice." And, and from that perspective, it's been overwhelmingly from Mr. Bukavales. Now, perhaps that's who I'm asking, and who I know, and there are several others I didn't get the opportunity, I can think of off the top of my head, that I had wanted to. I just, I didn't get around to it. But I'll give you some comments that I wrote down from, again, what I call everyday Ward Six residents. And these aren't my words, Mike, or, or Stephen, so, don't, don't hold me to them. "Steve would represent us. He's blue collar, a hard worker, and he understands Saco and government. Everyone, everyone around here knows Steve. He ran before, and many of the voters supported him. Steve would be the voice Ward Six needs. He wouldn't go with the flow. I don't really know Steve personally, but I know of Steve. He seems to have a deep sense of community. Steve is a hard worker, passionate about the community, and will give it his all. Steve was born here, he grew up here, raised his kids here, and he knows what the issues are, but also has the ability to find solution, always has." My personal favorite, and again, I didn't, I didn't say this, "He can be a big mouth, but his intentions are always solid and grounded in his community." Again, small sample size, but it's really all I have to go through, or with, because when I go through all these emails, outstanding accolades for everybody, but a lot of them are outside Ward Six. And so I'm just, again, putting it out there that my vote will reflect what I believe those from Ward Six directly have encouraged me to vote. And that's, you know, I mean, you seem like a lovely, fantastic woman. You've worked with my son, I believe, and I wholeheartedly, I wish I had another seat, I think, to fill, because I think you'd be an outstanding candidate, too. And, you know, how the vote goes is how it goes, it always has. And again, you know, 38% of Ward Six voted for Mr. Bukavales previously. He's already indicated he wants to run in August. So for me, personally, I have to hang my hat on that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not going to get too wood into the weeds on this one, though, other than to both thank Mr. Bukavales and Mrs. Hewitt for stepping up, because as my question, I hope, reflected, we're in a time when this nation, the state, localities, things are tough. We're going through some tough times right now. We're going through the post-COVID, what is normal now? What, how have things settled? How have our lives changed? We have all the old problems of homelessness and wage disparity, and where do you put a school? How do you fund the police and the fire departments? We have all these problems that didn't go away, in fact, are more exacerbated by the fact that we were all at home for about 12 to 18 months. And it doesn't help that anytime folks want to step up, whether it's school board, whether it's volunteer, whether it is in the public service, there is criticism, and there is a lot of unwarranted criticism. I always can compare it to the person at the end of the bar that's had about a couple more, and they think they've got all the answers in the world, but they've never sat behind a table and had all the documents and realized that you can approach this job with your philosophy and how you're, what's important to you, but a lot of it's reactionary. A lot of it, at the end of the day, is you get what's in front of you, and you've got to make tough decisions. And those decisions, ironically, are not going to win you a lot of brownie points. And to Counselor Parks' question, the delegate versus trustee, a lot of the times, in this situation, you've got to be a trustee and say, you know, "Everybody wants some candy," but sometimes you've got to give them the vegetables. And you've got to have the, basically, the fortitude to sometimes take some blows and make some tough decisions. From what I've seen from both candidates, both candidates, I think, are more than capable of fulfilling that. And to Counselor Johnston's point about, and Counselor Archer's point about the inherent unfairness of the situation, I would concur. That's why about a couple of years ago, we changed the charter so when you are appointed, you don't get a full term on your own. I mean, Counselor Berman's and Counselor Hatch were the last beneficiaries of that, and they got almost full terms, and God love them for it, because the people turned around and elected them because they liked the cut of their jib. We've now changed it so where if it's more than a year, you have to have a special election. But I'm definitely open to looking at that once we get past the budget season and we look at charter amendments, perhaps going with a, you know, just a special election, just so we don't have to be in the situation, because I've been in the situation three times. And, you know, usually you think, you know, getting to choose a city administrator is the hardest thing you have to do, though, and really, for day-to-day issue as a taxpayer, it is. But at the same time, sitting up here amongst ourselves and having to debate who is the better person, in our view, is inherently uncomfortable and inherently hurts people's feelings. And there's always going to be, you know, that sort of edge, you know. I was, I mean, I never won the popularity contest. I was last picked in school. I know what it's like to not feel, you know, like you're at the top of the, top of the game. But at the same time, I would simply say to that, as someone who, you know, persevered in here, I am a city councilor, never thought I would be, that both of these candidates, whoever is, whomever is not chosen tonight, I would strongly recommend, whether or not they want to run for office, I would certainly encourage that. I'd also encourage them to look at the boards and committees and the commissions that we have that are open, because this city needs good people to serve at all levels, to bring in fresh perspectives, to bring in fresh ideas. Because if it is just the same old people that are showing up, God love you, because you actually care, and I appreciate that. But Saco is a growing, dynamic city, and the more that we have more diverse voices and diverse perspectives, the better prepared we're going to be as we develop and grow as a city over the next 20, 30, 50 years. The old 30,000-foot view, though, where people can come in and look at a city and say, "Hey, wait a minute. It's wonderful, but how come you've never done this? Or how come you've never done that?" And Saco, sometimes, we're missing that. And the more diverse and the more new voices we get, the more that we're going to get that. And I think the city is going to be better off overall. And I just want to, once again, thank most, both Mr. Bukavales and Mrs. Hewitt for stepping up, because this is, it means you care. And as someone who's a civics geek, and I love this, and I love serving the public, that means a lot to me personally. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm actually still struggling with my decision. I really appreciated Mr. Bukavales's mention of the homeless population. That's an issue near and dear to my heart and one we need to solve. I also appreciated his focus on Camp Ellis and the Army Corps, PPA, and JETI. Obviously, an issue very near and dear to my heart, although I think we're on the precipice of success there. And traffic safety is of critical concern to all of us and of growing importance to our Bike and Ped Safety Committee, and really, should be a center focus, I think, of our city. I also appreciated Ms. Hewitt's focus on data and research and communication. I really appreciated her focus on education, which is one of the issues that I originally ran on and continued to support. And I have proposed, as she did, that the city needs to take a more active role in affordable housing, and I think tax incentives and other benefits to putting in some percentage of affordable housing is an approach that I would like to see the city take and have brought up in workshops and in other cases. I think I echo Counselor Johnston that we would strongly benefit from both candidates continuing to be engaged in the city. And it's a really difficult choice. Ultimately, of course, my decision, we have to vote one way or the other. And my decision will really be motivated by what I think is best for the city. And I also echo Counselor Gunn's comments that more voices and more diverse voices, I think, are critical to this process.
Thank you. Anyone else? Questions, comments? Okay, we're not seeing any. Okay, so the motion on the floor is to appoint Tricia Hewitt as the next Ward Six Councilor. We will go roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
No.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
No.
Okay, motion passes four zero. Congratulations, Tricia. You are the new next Ward Six Councilor. Four two, I'm sorry. We have two. Thank you, everybody, and we do appreciate both candidates. You both did an amazing job, and I think that the discussion through the council both proved that your importance to the city is needed everywhere, whether it be up here, or, as Counselor Gunn stated, boards and commissions. So again, thank you both. We do appreciate the time and the effort put into everything.
Madam Mayor? Now that we have, again, I know the term doesn't go into effect, but we do have the ability to invite guests to executive session. If she remains, would you want to consider her to be a guest to bring her up now? It is allowed.
Yeah, we certainly can bring her to the DS, but I would recommend against executive session at this point until appointment.
Yes, and that's why I brought her in, is that you're always, the city is always allowed to bring guests to executive sessions when they define it to be a guest.
That is probably more of a legal question. I think since she has been appointed as a city council member, I'm just a little concerned that that might be an issue because of the way the motion has been written, but it's up to the city. I'll defer to safety and just, we'll disregard.
Okay.
I would, I would just add that she hasn't been sworn in, so she's not a seated councilor and probably not privy to whatever information is in executive session.
Correct. I know that the previous two, when we were on Zoom, we invited both of you to stay on the meeting. If council would like, we can certainly invite Tricia to come and sit in the seat. Again, no vote or anything, but to at least sit.
Well, Madam Mayor, if I may, to Counselor Johnston's point, she has not been sworn in yet. I would, I would appreciate that she would stay and take in the meeting. As far as executive council goes, executive session goes, we can certainly get you up to speed about what's going on. But in terms of protocol, I think it would be appropriate if, you know, if things just stay as they are at the moment.
Okay. So, Tricia, City Clerk Hughes will be in touch with you. We will set a date for your swearing-in. It is traditionally here in chambers. And again, congratulations. Okay, so that now moves us on to previous item B, now item C of the action items, and that's the adoption of the amended fee schedule for parking. And that is assigned to... Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. With the addition of parking kiosks at the Transportation Center, lower long-term parking lot, the Police Department recommends city parking permits be defined specifically as beach parking permits only. The beach parking permits would encompass the Bayview and Camp Ellis parking lots for everyone, and Seaside Avenue and Bayview Extension for resident beach parking only. All other city parking lots would be regulated by time limits, or in the case of the Transportation Center, pay for parking. For background information, last year, we issued approximately 4,000 permits. Anyone 62 years of age or older, or a veteran, receives their permit for free. Additionally, the current $25 parking fee is the most affordable in the area. We had ordered that the council approve the change to the fiscal year 2024 fee schedule. I move to approve the order.
Motion has been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman? Is there any discussion or comments? Counselor Hatch, then Counselor Johnston?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. Just a point of clarification. We have a staff member here that can...
I mean, I could.
Okay, okay. No, it's just a clarification. I'm noticing that the non-resident beach parking permit is defined as seasonally, but I don't know what that time limit is. Should we define a timeframe for seasonal?
If you, you could probably add a seasonal.
Yeah, I think it would, it would avoid confusion, just, just my opinion. And whatever that timeframe is, is reasonable. I don't have any personal preference.
Yeah, I would probably say from Labor Day through Columbus Day. I'm not sure that, how the beach pass would be affected during that time, or from...
Memorial Day, if we follow the...
Yeah, Memorial Day.
Possibly like the same dog leash schedule?
Sure, yeah. I think that would, Memorial Day to Labor Day or Columbus or Indigenous People Day.
Well, I think people still go down to the beach.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I don't personally have any strong preference about the timing, but I think we should put a timing in there.
I'll correct myself, Indigenous People Day.
Yeah.
But that's the timeframe that I would think would probably be best.
Okay, Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. I would just add, I think somewhere it is defined. I don't, not necessarily in this memo, but I don't know if...
Right.
It's definitely defined somewhere in, whether it's parking ordinance or something, because I remember doing it several years ago.
It's April 1st through September 30th, if you look at 6410 Public Beaches, and that's for dogs. So if we, let's use ones that we already have, so.
Yeah.
I can reread it. Again, it's 6410...
Again, it's 6410 Public Beaches. It is April 1st through September 30th, dogs shall be leached on beaches. So that's kind of determining seasonality.
It's about the same kind of, that's fine.
Additionally, I would just, again, it's not specific to this, but overall discussion of parking at the transportation center, I think all of us, particularly myself being transportation centers in my ward, that there's been some upset stomachs about parking. And I would like the opportunity at council level to have that discussion publicly, because that change occurred simply through the fee structure and council never debated it. I'm more than willing to debate the merits of why we've instituted it, so I would like to have that opportunity, whether it's in workshop setting, and to further discuss the recently purchased lot and where we're at with that and how and when we're going to roll that out. Thank you.
Counselor Johnston, you asked, do you want to table this item or...
No, we can vote this, Tricia, just...
Okay.
It's before me. That's how my brain works. Got it before me, I gotta, I gotta get other information out at the same time.
Counselor Hatch?
And I would just like to express my support of Counselor Johnston's point about the transportation center. I too have received some comments about the complexities and the inconveniences of the system. I understand what we're trying to do, but I think we are overlooking some problems, so to have it come to council would be a good idea.
If I might, so, Your Honor, so it's probably something we can work, put on a list of workshops, which we're trying to plan going forward. I know that you, we have one coming up on the 22nd, and then the next one would be in...
Second week of February.
February. So that's something that we can discuss, and I can get the staff together for that as needed.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay. We will get that on one of the upcoming workshops. Okay, anyone else with discussion or comment? Okay, not seeing any. Roll call, vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Okay, that now takes us to item 10, which is new business. And the first item up, a housekeeping ordinance amendment to Chapter 179, 188, and 230.
Yes, Your Honor, I think that...
Emily here to...
Emily's here and will present on this matter.
And council, just a reminder that these items are new business. Counselor Hatch, you were assigned to this when it upcomes. Are you okay with that?
Thank you for having this on New Business tonight while this technology warms up here. Just go ahead and get us kicked off with where we're at with this. So this is our draft of what we're calling a housekeeping ordinance amendments. There are a lot of amendments here, and I know that. It looks like a large document. In the future, it will get larger, because we'll give you the full ordinance sections. This is just what we took snippets of each section of the ordinance for you, so you could kind of see where we're headed with everything. A lot of this is clarification-based, some of it is use-based for code enforcement, but a lot of it is clarification, cross-referencing different sections of different ordinances, looking specifically at site plan and subdivision, updating the table references. So it's a pretty, looks like a pretty large package here, but I'd be happy to go over anything specifically. We did bring back some important standards, like for a perfect example, for subdivision application processes, for some reason, the posting of a sign proving, showing that the developer was a private developer until the city reviews acceptance of a road, we thought was pretty important, and giving that developer's phone number if there's issues with the road. So we brought that back as something to look at in the draft here. That's just one example. If there are any specific questions, be happy to answer them, and I'd also be happy to take any recommendations. I know at the workshop that we had with the planning board and city council, there was a question as to whether or not additional items could be put in here. I think the answer is, of course. This is open if there's anything else.
Thank you. Counselor Johnston?
Nobody else? Thank you. I just, there is a lot going on here, and so I would just caution us all to take this slowly. I mean, this entire ordinance was just rewritten in 2020, 2021, and I knew at the time there was issues. I think I've found more issues since then, and I'm just concerned that now we're looking to make changes, that I'm seeing, that had very sound reasons for why they were instituted to begin with. But again, this is totally open for all of us, you know, discussion-wise going forward. But specifically, I, again, this is just my first read through this, and so I think this is site plan, Chapter 179-302, I think it's page 29, just talking about the notification requirements for minor site plan. And in it, it states, you know, the feet from a property that is required to be noticed. And I've felt for a long time that the 200-foot distance in the downtown, and I think it's the HDR, is really not adequate. So that is something I would like to see increased. I've had several instances where projects in my own neighborhood literally noticed a handful of people because the distance. I mean, let's take Mill 4, for example, on Saco Island, that project barely got over the bridge, yet it impacted everybody in the downtown and certainly everybody that drives that corridor. So it's just something, and I don't know what the number is. I understand that, you know, it's 600 feet, I believe, everywhere else in other zones, probably not that far, but a little bit more. And again, I recognize this is just under the minor change that is in the wheelhouse of the city planner, but I'd like to see it throughout the ordinance for all notifications.
Okay, so, excuse me, if I could just jump in. This is declared, this section here is to follow the same notification process as the other site plan requirements, because it was unclear that when the city planner reviews a project, that same radius distance should be notified. So if we want to increase the radius distance, that's fine, but we would just need to reflect that here as well as all other sections in the ordinance.
That's what I'm alluding to, is I think that it should go across to the other sections of the ordinance that requires a notification. And then the entire section, and I'm sure you have reasons for it, it's just not clear to me, of urban green space that we worked on during the ZOR's process has been deleted. Is that being replaced somewhere else, or we've decided it's no longer needed?
No, that is coming back as LID, under LID, that staff will bring forward. You can certainly leave it, but with the dimensions that are in there, it does not work. So what happened was with different drafts of the ordinance along the way, the intention of the green space to work does actually not, the urban green space provision does not actually work with the dimensions in the downtown. We've tried to make it work several times, just unfortunately with the number of drafts with the ZOR, it just was never married up at the end when the density numbers changed in the table of dimensional requirements. So we certainly are happy to put some legwork into trying to make it work, but right now, the way it sits, it just will not work. It's up to, it's up to the council. If you want to leave it, we can bring back changes to it. You certainly don't have to strike it in its entirety right here, but it was our recommendation that we bring it back in a better format for you.
Okay, that sounds excellent. I mean, if it doesn't function, there's no sense in having it there, but I did think it was an important component of the ordinance originally.
Agreed.
And then there was a reduction from, or setbacks in the BI zone, 50-foot front setbacks down to 20, and I just wasn't clear where that came from or why we're doing it.
So we had a section here that looks like we're changing a dimensional standard, but we're not. We're just clarifying, you know how the ordinance has cut sheets in it with the dimensional standards underneath in one section, and then the full table on another?
Yes.
So we're saying that those two sections should match. Right now, they do not.
Yeah, it sounds like a lot of this is cleanup, as you said. I personally can attest, as can Counselor Hatch, as a member of the public at the time, that that rush to get the zoning ordinance through left a lot of stuff just out there hanging. There is something that's specific to myself, because it was an issue that I brought forward towards the end of that rush, and it looks like what's been proposed, and I can understand why, because it's a bit confusing and doesn't make sense why it ended up the way it did. But under the use tables, it looks as though it's proposed to strike fast food restaurant from the downtown general business and the HB zone entirely. They were conditional initially and permitted under the HB. And I guess I'm seeking clarification as to why, and at the same time, I will tell you why it was, why it ended up this way. And so the old ordinance that predates the current one, trying to figure out how to explain this, it allowed for drive-through window service. The intent at the time was just banks, right? So we didn't want to have McDonald's, for example, in the downtown, but we wanted to allow for the banking institutions to have, you know, a drive-through. So that got, and again, I'd have to go back and remember, I remember it was very confusing at the time, but towards the end, I discovered that drive-through window service was being removed entirely from the downtown and the general business zone, which I didn't want, because I wanted to encourage the banking institutions to have that service, but I didn't want to allow what had been a longstanding tradition of not allowing, you know, those drive-through food establishments to exist. So if that's clear. Okay. So at the time, I had met with city staff, and they crafted a definition that is what the definition is today, which I'm sure for code enforcement offices, probably like, what is this? I didn't write it. I don't know specifically how it ended up that way, but I can understand why it's confusing. And I guess, from my perspective, whatever change we do, I just want to ensure that we're, me personally, as the rest of us, but I don't think there's much benefit to having, again, a drive-through food establishment in the core of your downtown. And again, that's a longstanding tradition going back to the 70s in Saco. Again, we're trying to encourage mom-and-pop establishments on Main Street or wherever else. So if we can correct that, and, let me step back, because what I discovered reviewing it, was that what was supposed to happen was that definition was supposed to go in place, and the windows, drive-through window service was supposed to be added back in, and never got added back in. So if you're a banking institution and you're in any of these zones, you can't have a window service. And right now, it looks like you could still have a fast food establishment, I guess. I don't know. But I hope that's clear. If not, I certainly can meet with you and, you know, come to some conclusion here.
Yeah, I think we should work with the city administrator to clarify that, because we, we actually met, so when we say city staff, we pulled in several staff members on this, definitely not just planning. We worked with code and engineering. We brought it to Planning and Development Review Committee, went over these changes. And so there is some ambiguity there with fast food and food and drinks, so I'd love to get more data from you on the background of that.
And I would say specifically, again, I don't know, Mr. Hamlin was the one that I think ultimately came up with the definition, and it made sense to me when I was in his office, but having read it since, it's like, what are we doing here? My thought, as I explained it, and again, not to name-plug or use specific restaurants, but I envisioned, you know, well, what's wrong with, say, a, I said this before we did the contract zone, but what's wrong with, say, a Chipotle that's technically fast food but doesn't have a drive-through? But under that current ordinance, that wouldn't be allowed. So I was trying to serve, you know, both elements, be able to allow some level of, you know, fast food component that didn't have foods or drive-through window, while also allowing the banking institutions to still have that afforded to them. I mean, really, it came down to that overall use, and the way it was defined previously, it had two definitions for drive-through, and it got pulled out during the process, and it was just a window service, and it was allowed, you know, throughout all these different zones, not recognizing there was a distinct difference. Again, that just is something that occurred through that lengthy process, and clearly it's still an issue. So I just, I want to be able to, you know, figure that out for those parties involved. I think at this point, that's probably it of the, you know, the quick reading of this, but certainly I think there's other areas, if we're going to have the zoning ordinance open again, we probably should fix other areas. So, thank you.
Yeah, and our goal here as staff was to try to bring the things that need clarification, cross-referencing, or maybe bring back a standard that Saco historically had relied on that got dropped. It was, it was not wholesale opening, but happy to help with whatever council's preferred direction is.
Is this something that council may possibly want in a workshop? Because of, there's so many, again, as Counselor Johnston stated, there's so many changes, things are referencing back and forth. Would it be more comfortable if we were to bring it in a workshop setting first, working with Leonard Prescott to get the understanding of what's behind it, review it, and then bring it back for vote?
Well, I would think that, excuse me, Your Honor, that we, as we go through these, we may want to have one to deal with all the proposals that are here, because Counselor Johnston makes a lot of good points. So it would probably be in our best interest to have a workshop where we can set up and have the staff here and spend some time, you know, get the visuals better situated so we can go through one by one. So that would, I would say that would be something that we'd want to look at for all these planning issues that we have on the agenda tonight, unless there's something of immediate need, Emily, that you think we can't wait. I'm looking at maybe the possibility, Your Honor, of trying to do something in combination with the parking lots, like the February 12th. I wouldn't want to hang it out there longer, because there's some things with...
But the season will be starting after that.
Right, and not only that, but there's some things in it that we want to try to encourage in the Route 1 corridor that aren't there. So I think February 12th, unless the council has some other idea, or you do, but right now, I think what we penciled in was for the transportation center and the parking. I think it would be something we could probably put the planning in as well, unless there's objection to that.
We could potentially, we do have the workshop with the rules and order of business on the 22nd.
Sure.
Depending on how much time that would take, we might be able to even mine it if you would like it sooner. I think we could probably fit both in.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
I'm not here on the 22nd.
Oh, you're not here on the 22nd? Well, that won't work. So I, if you, if you're, if the council's okay with it, I would say we'd prepare for February 12th to have a presentation. Also, I'll make sure we have the proper staff here to talk about the transportation center, and at that time, we'd probably want to talk about the new parking lot that we've purchased at 142 Main Street. So those would be the two items I would think you'd want to bring forward, and I think that'd be a pretty full plate right there.
And I think that way it would be beneficial for our two new counselors as well, Joshua and Tricia coming in, giving them an understanding, instead of looking at this and not understanding or looking at it, and again, it's a good educational training opportunity. Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. I just want to give my support for moving these zoning issues into a workshop. I think that's an excellent idea. I would also, not that I have any control over what goes on the workshop agenda, but you might want to think about dedicating a workshop to... but you, you might want to think about dedicating a workshop to the zoning issues, because I, I think what will happen, uh, is there will be a number of other issues. I know Counselor Johnston has some issues that he'd like to bring forward, as do I. Tonight, we were, we were going to get into chapter two-thirty. Uh, I spent an enormous amount of time, uh, when I first got on the council back in May of twenty-twenty-two, bringing forth some recommendations for, uh, the contract zone provision within, uh, two-thirty. Uh, we debated it, I, I went back and looked at the video. It was quite interesting, but we had about a thirty-minute debate. We seemed to have a fairly strong consensus of moving the issue forward, at least in my mind, and then it, it was just dropped like a hot potato. So I, I still have all of that data, all that research, all that information. I would like to bring it forward so that we can debate it in a workshop. And, um, and so I, I think, um, my only caution would be if we're going to have a workshop on zoning, that you might want to limit it to just the zoning issues that we have.
Yep, city administrators, Bohanko, we can combine A and B. If you feel that that, at that time, to get those two completed. Counselor Berman.
Yeah, I just want to maybe echo and clarify Counselor Hatch's concerns. Uh, I, I think, uh, just the zoning alone will take up an entire workshop. And so, I, I would suggest that if we're going to discuss parking, that may be better combined with the council rules and order of business. Those may be two items that we can capture in one night.
Yeah, that makes sense.
But, but I think the, the zoning is, is going to be a large enough issue, uh, to take up an entire workshop. Uh, I just also just want to just inquire, I guess, are there any urgent issues on here that are affecting things currently in planning? Is there any reason why this can't wait for, for the workshop? And then to start the three-meeting process.
Well, there are a couple of uses in the zoning that are not allowed right now. Hotels or motels, even though it's listed in the description of the Portland Road District is not an allowed use. I don't know of anyone who's banging on our door to open a hotel, but it's just something to be aware of. Campgrounds, there is an OAB campground, uh, looking to do some expansion. They've made that public in a previous statement. So, um, that, that's not able to be expanded on here or not, right now. So there are just a few, few nuanced use things that maybe they can wait till the twelfth and that's fine, but just to be aware of. May I ask, though, that perhaps there could be questions Madam Mayor sent back to City Administrator Bohanko, so that we have a good idea to really focus that workshop?
That makes a lot of sense. Thank you, Emily.
Would you like them?
Yeah, direct them directly to me and I'll make sure that, I'll bundle them up and we can discuss those prior to the work session, workshop.
So if you have any questions between now and the next couple of weeks, send them to City Administrator Bohanko, um, regarding, do you want to go over the, uh, item B, chapter two-thirty?
Um, sure, I'll just run through it quickly. Uh, what we're really looking to do is not only make some amendments to how we amend the zoning and the contract zoning for clarification, um, but also to provide a list of contract zones in the future. Other communities codify their list of contract zones. Right now, you'll see a list of about forty-six. Please keep in mind, we lumped the amendments together as one, so that number may, is probably larger. So before the next workshop, we will be researching those contract zones and determining, uh, if there's any that we've included on the list that have been dissolved and things like that, so. But we just want to give you an initial list. And this will be helpful, uh, as properties are bought and sold in the city. Flagging those by map and lot number, I think will be really helpful for people and potential sales.
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I'm happy to see this, you know, it's something I've asked for, for many years now, so that would be a welcomed addition, um, and, and full agreement with Counselor Hatch when it comes to the contract zoning, um, element here. And I commend you for trying to incorporate some of those elements, but I really think a full, deep dive into, um, that ordinance specifically as, you know, Counselor Hatch has previously proposed and really tighten that up and make it more of a policy than, you know, three or four sentences that exist today. So I'm looking forward to that personally. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, uh, that moves us on to item C of new business, petition for zoning map amendment filed by Bedard Properties LLC to change the zoning of a portion of Map Eighty-seven, Lot Seventeen, from Rural Conservation to the West Residential.
Thank you. We have applicants here today. They filed an application, um, property as described in the materials here to go from, RC currently, our Rural Conservation District, into West Residential. The council may be familiar with a portion of this property that was rezoned previously from West Residential to RC to support, uh, commercial solar energy system development. And now, a couple of years later, they're asking for the, they're asking for the opposite of that, uh, to support housing. So, uh, you can hear from the applicant, as we did with the last new business item, if that's your preference, as they are here tonight, uh, or we can move this forward. It is a petition, so it will move forward to the planning board, but this is an opportunity to provide some initial feedback from the council level.
Counsel, uh, Counselor Berman?
Uh, I'd, I'd be happy to hear from, from the applicants if they wanted to share something.
So then, okay, would you like to?
Not an idea.
This one here.
Thank you.
And then it's going to come up on your file explorer, or it might pop up over here.
So, so can you, uh, can you just do it?
You can open it here.
Yep, it's just, um, and then whatever comments, it's not open. Um, yeah, one over, and she'll-- Okay.
It's just reading.
Yeah. Do probably do.
Yep.
She's an old guy.
Can we try opening a new, just like folder? Here, I'll pull it up online and you can tell me where to scroll through.
Uh, this, yeah, these were actually two, um, actually, I can go grab the, uh, USB.
I don't have that.
Okay.
Um, try it down this.
Not a problem. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. Good evening.
Woo-hoo. Okay. Definitely a little different than, uh, the microphones I'm used to. Jason Haskell with DM Roma Consulting Engineers, uh, here on behalf of, um, Kevin Bedard with Bedard Properties LLC. Uh, the property located on Route Five is actually, uh, right across the street from Deep Brook, uh, Deep Brook Golf Course. They are to the south, or the property is to the north of Deep Brook. And then to the east of the, uh, property is the Hillview Heights Neighborhood. Then to the north is the Saco-owned, uh, woodland associated with the middle school. And then also to the west is the Fenderson property, uh, the Fenderson Farm property. This portion of the property used to be part of the overall Fenderson Farm property on, uh, New County Road. A portion of it has recently been split off to the applicant's, uh, Bedard Properties LLC. So, my understanding now is that back in January of twenty-twenty-one, when the zoning ordinance and the map were updated, it was originally, this property was originally zoned as West Reds, West Residential. And then, uh, Mr. Fenderson came through, petitioned and got it rezoned to Resource Conservation to move forward with a potential, uh, solar farm. Since that, uh, so it's, it actually sounds like that is catching ground, so it may be moving forward, but the area of this, uh, solar farm is actually going to be in the open field area. The parcel that was split off to Mr. Bedard, um, is actually a wooded area off to the side of this overall parcel. But because in twenty-twenty-one, when it was rezoned to Resource Conservation, or, I'm sorry, Re, uh, Rural Conservation, um, it all got lumped into the rezone. It's actually surrounded in all sides, other than on the Fenderson property, to be in West Residential. I wish I could have shown you that, but, um, so, um, now we are looking at, uh, potentially doing a subdivision on the property. And, based on the fact that with the, I believe it's Sancho Circle, um, had a, the public utilities extended beneath, uh, I ninety-five, there's now potential for the project to be on public utilities. Which you would anticipate, if you're going to be bringing public utilities close to a property that would otherwise need septic and a drilled well, you should be able to look at it and go, okay, well, now you don't need the full acre parcel to fit a septic field and the separation to a drilled well. Uh, so that's kind of what we're looking at right now, is we are required by the current subdivision ordinance to extend the public utilities up Route Five because of, um, the vicinity, it's within, uh, fifteen hundred feet of the property. So, to do any type of a land development on this property, you'd be looking at extending the public utilities up regardless. So, we were hoping that we could go back to the original intent that the, um, the, uh, council and the, the city had for this property before it was rezoned for the solar farm. In addition, um, what, uh, with, I know we went through and did a little bit more in-depth detail of the subdivision than, uh, possibly was necessary for this, uh, rezone, but we're really looking at trying to keep Deep Brook, which runs down the middle of the property, in kind of a, an open space recreation area, not really so much as a, an active recreation, but more of a passive, where you can potentially have a trail going down to the brook, looping back around to the, the hammerhead at the end of the road, something along those lines, that you would still have the use of the land, but also the preservation of the habitat itself for the Deep Brook. And then also, um, another, uh, I guess, connection to the comprehensive plan would be, we'd be looking at providing the sidewalks that would typically be part of the subdivision, but we could also intertwine those, uh, the sidewalks with some type of a walking trail through the open space, kind of providing the exercise, uh, the exercise in active opportunities, uh, that the, uh, council at the time thought was very important, um, as part of it. And then also with the smaller lot sizes, we'd be looking at, I believe it was a minimum lot size of fifteen thousand square feet, and with a lot like that, you're not fitting a four-to-five-bedroom house on something, uh, with, uh, the restrictions of the, this, the width of the property, the setbacks and everything like that, you'd be looking at something that's a little bit more affordable and not the big estate lots and houses that you'd be, uh, potentially be looking at in more of a rural setting. So, with that said, I'm hoping that we can move this forward with the planning board and, uh, I guess we're here to answer any of the questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, guess we're not seeing any. So this again is new business, and it looks like it's assigned to Counselor Archer. Are you willing to take this when it comes back?
Yeah, just five minutes until we get more information.
Counselor Johnston?
I, I don't have any questions for the applicant, but I do have comments for council if you want those now.
Oh, yeah, please.
Okay. So again, um, it's zoning, 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 all the time it seems like here. Just caution us, again, on how you move forward with this. I don't necessarily have a feeling one way or the other, yet. I just know the past history involved with how we got here, and oftentimes, you know, when people from the outside, new staff, don't know the full story here, um, it's easy to go, well, what's the big deal? And so from my perspective, you know, one of seven that ultimately is, you know, the forefathers of this community and we decide how it's developed, um, it, it, it's important to me, right? So, we talk about growth and, and growth impacts, and all these little decisions we make impact the whole of Saco. So if we're looking to move, you know, what essentially is sprawl out into the country setting, which has always been, you know, the DMZ, for example, had always been the turnpike. And so there's a lot of history involved with how we got to what we have there today that's not really in this conversation. So when it stated that, well, the zoning was X previously, okay, well, if you go back to two thousand and ten, thereabouts, the zoning at the request of the Fendersons, it was changed to R-one-D at the time, um, to allow for some housing that was on septic, understanding that the, gosh, conservation zone at the time didn't allow for, um, smaller lot sizes, but this would. That was, you know, a, a, I don't know how to call it a, a lifeline, but essentially give them more ability to do something with the property. But, there was always an understanding that the sewer was not there, so it would have been limited in how much it could develop. Then came along twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen, thereabouts, with the Labanis Project, the Sancho Drive that we speak of, um, which, part of that contract zone allowed the extension of the sewer under the turnpike, onto the other side of the road, which, as I said at the time, if you build it, they will come. Well, here we are again. And so during that ZORIS process, or that zoning ordinance revisions process, um, I, I think we did spend a decent amount of time discussing, um, whether or not it was appropriate to, to now allow, um, that zone to continue as, as it did. Then soon after that, now, I think Counselor Archer was here, the Fendersons came back asking, whoa, now we can't have our solar farm, you know, making, you know, accusations that we changed the zone, uh, from under them, when, I mean, ultimately, you know, these requests have gone back and forth. And so, again, here we have another request, that in my book, it's sizable. I mean, I don't know how you all feel, but it's, it's not something I take lightly in the sense that you're now, once this development connects to that sewer that's further down, the next development's coming in too. And you have that creeping sprawling effect, and then we sit here, regurgitate terms like smart growth, and we consistently in the city of Saco have done everything but, so it just, it's something to keep in mind. I'm not saying that the request isn't warranted. I actually, you know, having read that memo, kind of feel bad, because clearly, and you're not the only instance, you buy a piece of property and you pull up any city map and it says R-one-D, which is the old ordinance, and I can understand why, you know, a, a buyer is kind of, I mean, we need to correct that. I mean, not just for them, I, I can pull up any of our, you know, maps and they're not accurate. No, the, the tax cards aren't accurate, um, so when you're buying real estate and you think you're buying something, and then you find out after the fact that something's changed on you, and here you are, petitioning a council to change the zoning ordinance, I mean, you just get a hodgepodge nature. It's not orderly growth. I'm not saying I'm opposed, I'm just saying that we need to take a, a careful approach to it and, you know, what are the long-term impacts and, or are we saying, you know, for a lack of a better term, to hell with it, you know, we're not going to have conservation land anymore? Because that's what's going to happen. We've seen it. Throughout my lifetime, I've seen it, and, you know, my forty short years, all you have to do is look at the Jenkins Road and see how that has developed rapidly. As soon as that sewer made a little bit of a connection, uh, and there's no question in my mind, now that you have the reserve property that has extended the sewer line up from Portland Road, up the Flag Pond, very short time, next twenty years, we'll see a sewer line all the way out, connect to the other end of the Jenkins Road and continue down the Flag Pond, because that's what the land is. And so it's, it's, it's easy to buy cheap land versus building on, you know, land that's in town. And so, again, much larger topic and one I've yet to really wrap my head around fully and figure it all out, and I don't think any of us have. But, I just would like to take this slowly as, as, you know, we can anyway. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Okay, not seeing any. This again will be coming back to us at a future agenda. Okay, thank you. Next up, item D, we do have an informational update with Howard Carter, Director of the Saco Wastewater Recovery. Director Carter, come on up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. You all got the memo, assuming everybody's read it. So I guess at this point, it's open for any questions you might have.
Questions, Counselor Berman.
Well, I guess first is a thank you for all the work that you've done in finding all those sources of additional funding. And I know construction costs have gone through the roof.
Oh, yeah.
And you guys have really done an outstanding job of bringing in additional funding partners and sources to help offset the cost of this really needed project for our town. So that's, I guess, a thank you to start. The second question, it just wasn't clear to me from the memo, and maybe the answer is you don't know, or maybe I just didn't read the memo carefully enough, but it was kind of unclear to me about of the 54, 850, whatever, how much of that is going to end up bonded by the city? Do we have a sense of that?
Well, right now, as it stands today, we'll be bonding all 50 of those dollars. And we had to make quite a few concessions to get to the number that we're at today. None of them were mission critical per se. We've knocked out like admin, building upgrades, a storage shed, and actually some of our dewatering. But within that 54, 850, 611, there's about four and a half million of contingency funding, which we hope not to use. We've valued engineered this just about to the last rock almost. We also are carrying $400,000 for contaminated soils that we were just doing some test bits for the last week, and hopefully we'll get some of that money back. We do have some future funding. We still have $9.3 million on the table from FEMA that we have not been awarded. We got some information today that they're going to send some folks up the first of February to take a look at the site. So we're still in play on that. Whether we get that, I don't know. But we can't go forward, we're signing the contract, till we know we have the money. And we have this money now, so we're ready to move forward with that. Also, we have the PFAS issues, and there may be some more funding coming in for dewatering type things in the future. But as it stands today, we're pretty happy with this number. It took a long time to get there with, like you said, the rising costs. But we've also added in things too, like we're getting rid of our sodium hypochlorate for disinfection. We're going to actually use UV. We're actually going to a Trisha retype plant for future regulations. We're going in all in, let's just get this thing done for the next 20 years, 30 years, and move on.
Counselor Hatch.
I would just like to add the kudos that Counselor Berman, I've been, this started, seemed to start when I came on council, you've done a just a tremendous job of keeping your thumb on things and trying to work as best you can with conditions that you can't control. So I appreciate that effort and I think this will be a good outcome.
No, thank you. And of course, we've had good staff and City Administrator Bahanko's been a big help. He's been through some of these upgrades in the past. So it's all worked out very well.
Anyone else? Director Carter, I know that we were supposed to originally start some construction in end of August, first of September. That was delayed, hoping for some of the funding. When is that scheduled for now?
So right now, we're tentatively hoping to start by the first of March. So I think some of it were kind of held up for FEMA because they don't want us to start anything till they see some of the stuff. So we're hoping maybe it'll be better than that. But we get to the point too, that a lot of these contracts, we get to the end of the calendar year, and some of these people didn't really want to hold their price, we had to start entering into some of these.
So we get locked in, kind of?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Good. Okay, anyone else? Not seeing anything. All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate the update.
Yep.
Okay, that completes the new business items. That now takes us to item 11, Administrative Update. And City Administrator Bahanko?
Thank you, Your Honor. As you are aware, I've now posted and sent in advance my administrative comments to you. And I'll just try to be brief on the detail. These are now posted on the website today. They were posted and they have all the past administrators report. But I think for Counselor Berman and as he described the importance of the PPA, I'm happy to report that it's moving forward. It's being sent up the chain. And once we get a date for signature for the PPA, I will let the city council know. And we might decide if we want to do anything, I'll talk to the mayor, might be something that we want to have a public signing or however you want to do it. So that's moving along nicely. Unfortunately, we've had a resignation of the Deputy Public Works Director, and I'm working with Director Fox to develop the job description and to maybe reassess those job duties more operational in nature. So we're moving in that direction. I also am very happy to report that we have gotten the Government Finance Officers Association Award for our Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the Fiscal Year, June 30th, 2022. We've had those in the past, and it really is a significant accomplishment by the city staff. It's a lot of hard work. It shows that our finances and the way we approach them are universally accepted throughout the United States. These are the GFOA, pretty much governs how municipal finance is, it works. Then just a reminder of the city council workshop, again, the January 22nd. I did send out in advance a copy of the Rules and Order Business. So the mayor, I assume, will be wanting council members to come forward with their information. And then we've added, of course, to the 22nd, we've added the parking discussion. The BPI grant application has been submitted by the city staff. It took a team effort and that's now with the DOT. I also am happy to report that from FEMA Disaster Assistance, from December 2022 storm, that we received a total of $87,844 from FEMA. That's 75% of the $117,000 cost for that storm. And then the main emergency management put in another 15% or $17,568. I want to thank Director Fox for the work he did on this and he closed it out, did a nice job. Just want to let you know, just a reminder that Monday, next Monday, January 15th, is Martin Luther King Day, so the city hall will be closed, just a reminder of that. I will be reading this RFP Commercial Equalization Project. The city of Saco seeks proposals from revaluation companies to conduct a commercial equalization project to provide an accurate inventory of all taxable business and commercial properties. There are 421 commercial properties within the city of Saco, together with the owners of record as of April 1st, 2025. So record as of April 1st, 2025. Proposals will be accepted until Thursday, February 8th, 2024, at 4:00 PM. Please visit sacomaine.org for additional information. An additional RFP central station, central fire station audio, the city of Saco was soliciting requests for proposals from qualified vendors to design, develop, and install, test, and commission, upgrade sound system equipment for in the apparatus bays, mezzanine, and two stair towers at the central fire station. Submittals will be accepted until Monday, February 12th, 2024, at noon. Again, go to the website to view this information. And again, just an upcoming agenda preview, as I mentioned earlier, there'll be a workshop on Rules and Order of Business plus parking. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments for City Administrator Bahanko? Okay, not seeing any. That moves us down now to item 13, Council Discussion and Comment. Do we have any discussion or comments? Okay, moving on, takes us to Executive Session. Is there a motion to move into Executive Session? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. Be it ordered that the city council enter into Executive Session pursuant to MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405.6a, personnel matter, and e consultation between the municipality and its attorney.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Given what I know of Topic A, I don't feel it belongs in Executive Session, so I will be voting no.
Motion passes 5-1. We will be meeting down in the conference room downstairs at, I'll take a quick five-minute break, 9:06. ...
Okay, welcome back everybody. Is there a motion to exit executive session?
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes please.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to exit executive session passes 6-0. And that takes us to item 14. There is no report from executive session this evening. Item 15, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
No.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-1 to adjourn. Have a great night you gentlemen.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.